Hello?
Why hello?
Ah, holy shit, I'm talking to somebody. Alright, how are you?
Good, how you doing Jack?
Outstanding sir, back from the east coast, fat dumb and happy.
Fat, oh boy, east coast huh?
Yeah, oh boy is a key word there. Uh, it, it uh, it snowed for the first time in a hundred years in New Orleans and Mohammed, my uh, Uber driver was not pleased.
I'll bet, yeah, they're not used to it there.
No, he said a lot of, he, he talked, he, he spoke a lot Muslim on our trip to the motel, yes. So, are, are you in person there or are you uh?
No, I'm, I'm uh, Zoom, Zooming also.
Oh good, good, alright, well, we must've, I must've figured it out, they changed, had a hard time finding it, but that's typical me.
Okay, very good.
The uh, February 19th, special meeting of the Harbor Commission to Depot Bay is on our session. All roll please, Carl.
For right.
Here.
Hartman.
Here.
O'Brien.
There.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Present.
Everybody's here.
Okay, I just have one uh, clarification before we begin. Last meeting, um, Ted, I said that the, that the cleats on dock two were bigger, um, and uh, basically, I knew that there were two sizes. The cleats on, on the main docks, two, three and four are twelve inch cleats and the docks on, the cleats on all the finger docks are eight inch. And that's based on, based on twenty to thirty foot for eights and over forty foot, uh, twelve. Okay. Alright, we are here to discuss the draft ordinance, uh, Harbor Regulation Ordinance. And uh, we'll open with anybody, any of you guys online have uh, any comments? Start out with on the, on the uh, Harbor Regulation, Brad?
I'm fine, I, I kinda thought this was resolved, my fault for not paying better attention, I guess.
Okay.
Did we, did we, did we come to a conclusion on the number of crab pots we're gonna be allowed?
Yes. We'll get to it.
Okay.
Thank you. You're good?
I, I read through it and I'm, I'm happy with what's presented, um, appreciate the staff time that went into this, because I know it's a lot of time. But, I'd like to think of this, it, it's been a work in progress.
I, I'd also like to thank meeting with um, Eva Harmon, Tyler Turner and Chris, Chris Schatner? Schatner plus Ted and you weren't there.
No.
No, um, because we sat down and worked out.
That's great, that's great to get that in your life and I do really appreciate it and I, because we've been looking at this for a long time and it, I'm, I'm tweaking to make it. If that's for everyone that is using our facilities.
Anybody in the audience have anything they wanna say? I have some, I have some comments to make, does anybody have it?
Is this a time couple of time?
Sure.
Is this a time?
Yeah, we do, we did, this is the only thing I've ever done.
So, um, my name's Fran, I'm sixty-six, monthly school in Depot Bay. It's on, yeah, yeah. Um, this is indeed a lot of work and um, I, I appreciate it. There were a few places where I had um, kind of concern about the wording, um, like on um, page five, I think it was, um.
Can we go to five, can you, can we do it this way?
Excuse me?
Before we go to five, so we're not jumping around, I've got one before five, got one before five comment and then you can chime in when you're, when you hit one of your pages, okay? Is that alright with you?
Um, I think this is public comments, let me say what I need to say and then you guys have all the floor.
Okay, we don't have, okay, go ahead.
Well, means, I could do it otherwise.
Go ahead.
I mean, there're not, not a lot, I mean, I have one main concern, but these smaller concerns, um, on page uh, five under violation. I just don't understand, um, it's called vessel violation, it's above, right above ninety-two point oh three use of harbor facilities. The word entering, any vessel entering and remaining at the harbor without authorization, or remaining at the harbor after mortgage license agreement has been terminated or in violation of any lines from pertaining to this public, the city. I don't think the word entering, I think the second phrase is probably what we need, but I don't know if it's a violation for a vessel who doesn't have moorage. Um, or even if they're not, I mean, I don't know how we authorize people to enter the harbor.
Okay.
So, um, I would just think what we mean is, starting at that second phrase.
Well, yeah, okay, and I, that's, that's an urgent comment and I would agree with you on entering, but I would say leave remaining at the harbor without authorization.
But that starts off remaining.
No, any vessel remaining at the harbor.
After mortgage license agreement has been terminated, that second phrase covers it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay, I see where you're going.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Okay, yeah, Kim?
I don't know if you have to read.
You would have to answer the question whether a boat is in.
Um, the only time I've had people calling and asking if they can come in, I told them no is when they are uh, inappropriate size.
But this is not, it wouldn't be a violation.
Well, if they came in after telling no, it would be.
It would, it would be, yeah, right, it would be a violation if you came in after being told no, or they came in without asking, or do they usually go through the coast guard?
When they're coming in, they're usually calling inbound to the coast guard and coast guards to tell them if the channel's clear or not.
Right.
Um, but as for every boat coming in now, in and out of the harbor, no, I have not checked in or I'm not checking every single vessel coming through.
So, a large vessel could come in and we wouldn't, the coast guard could have a large vessel in?
If they didn't know who they were talking to, yes.
So, it could happen, a vessel could enter without being authorized.
Well, and that's why we have a transit.
I mean, entered, if you authorize by coast guard, it's not necessarily ours.
If the vessel's too big to safely come into the harbor, yeah.
But I mean, that's why you have that transit spot, if you get caught offshore here and it's reserved and you wanna get in, you wanna get tied up, so, I'm not, I'm not gonna turn that away.
Um, if they are going to get wedged into the rocks, then yes, we would say you need to call the coast guard and have the coast guard escort you down Newport, something like that, where it would be safe to get into the harbor then. But something, you know, if it were, say, a vessel was like a seventy-five footer or something like that wanting to come in on a rough day, I would be calling the coast guard and saying, you got a problem, I would say, we can't deal with it.
Well, yeah, that, that's, I guess the point is a vessel can enter.
Without us giving them a yes or no.
Right, so the answer to the question would be, I think the language needs to stay, a vessel can enter, it's whether or not they would be allowed to remain without a authorization. Or a license agreement. So, a vessel could come in, in distress, or a big size and you could go get the heck out, or it's time to go, and not be within that jurisdiction. But if they come in and stay without a license agreement, that's a violation.
How is a harbor refuge?
Yeah, I was gonna say, what is the point of this?
Since it's a harbor refuge, at what point do you?
Guys, this has been in here for a long time, so, um, this would be a discussion that hopefully you guys would have had at some point, I don't bother answering this for you.
Right, they know it.
Well, because I don't know the answer to this question, I'm willing to add the answer.
That's, that's, that's what people, they, people come in here on the way up and down the coast, they stop and get fuel, spend the night, take off in the morning, you know?
So, they do enter, that's my point, my point is not removing that language, because they do enter, it's whether they remain without authorization.
Okay.
And then, I guess remain is gonna be up to the subject, right?
Because a person can come in, get fuel and leave, right?
Yes.
Without having mortgage license agreement.
Yes.
That's what this is designed to cover, folks that come in and don't leave.
I guess remain isn't gonna be subject, you know, whether, how long is remain, you know?
I would say remain without having, talking to uh, harbor staff.
Without authorization.
Mortgage.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, now it's the.
And he could say, hey look, this guy's not gonna be able to get out for a couple days.
No.
Yeah, we've had vessels come in and break down.
I just wanna make sure that we're not booting anybody else to that.
No, this does, actually does not eliminate, but pulling that out and staying and only remaining without, with, after a mortgage license agreement does eliminate this boat entering for fueling and.
Okay.
Okay, um, so the, um, the next, um, comment was the use of harbor facility. A, about the, last two should be designated as the ADA accessible dock. So this, I think the point is, is to have an area that um, is designated to be able to um, have ADA accessible.
Well, and I've, I've talked to you about this before and I talked to our insurance, I've talked to the docks folks, and that was the design of this dock, was to be the ADA accessible dock. So, but we can't tell a boat on dock one, you can't take any ADA posts, because ADA posts means accessibility, means anything from walkers, wheelchairs, whatever. We're just saying that we have designated, this is the primary access, so if there needs to be ramps, you know, things like that, stationary ramps, things like that.
That's fine, I was just wondering if we wanted to add the word mobility disability, because there's a lot of different types of disabilities. So that's the, the.
What's the, what, what's the? Because the only thing we recognize is the ADA aspect of it, I would be considered to have a mobility disability, simply because I have sixty percent disabled because of my back issue, but I'm not disabled. So, I mean, but it's up to you guys, you're the Harbor Commission, if you wanna recommend that addition, we can do that.
I think it's fine. I think it's okay.
Um, so, committed to board or disembark from boats, some people with disabilities may want to crab off the docks. They might, so I think you have to add the words able, are permitted to access the docks and to board or disembark from boats.
We're only talking about dock two in this instance.
Right, but some, somebody wants to access the docks and has a disability, can use dock two during daylight hours to crab off the docks.
Can't all docks be used during the daylight hours to crab off of, so? Right, but does that, I'm maybe I'm not wrong, but does that matter?
Because you're restricting this sentence to not have only those people.
It's only just. Oh, I see.
The implication is that if you wanna.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say see this section regarding um, crabbing on the docks.
Okay.
Um.
Go through it.
Yeah.
I mean, couldn't you just leave off that second sentence and just say accessing this ADA accessible dock?
Nope. Nope. I think that would just reform back to the crabbing on the docks and cover that.
No, I'm trying to say that you're, you're not saying that people with disabilities may wanna access the docks for purposes other than boarding or disembarking. You're, you're, you're not saying that they might just want to.
I will go on to the docks, I get what you're saying, I will qualify the language to talk about that this designation is specifically regarding the board and disembark, but all other uses of the docks are permitted per other exceptions in the code. Because there's other exceptions in the code, so we're not trying to say only handicap people can, they can only get on that boat or get off that boat. The docks are still open to the public, we're not limiting that, this, I will further refine through this language to make sure it doesn't limit, I will ask, um, they qualify on that. I get what you're saying, but I don't think just removing board or disembark will take care of that. At least not to the point where.
Adding the language access as well, access the docks and to board or disembark, I, I would like to remember. And then we'll present it at the lunch thing, but I will find some language that works for everybody to make it clear what we wanna do on this. On page, um.
Before you go to page, before you go past page five, I do have it on page five, that is, on the animals and B. Should we talk about cleanup of uh, animal fecal matter on the dock?
That is under sanitation.
There?
Yeah.
I know it's called under sanitation, alright, what's going with me, okay.
I know, I, I don't appreciate, if you wanna recommend it be added here, then just let me know.
It should be added here, so it's easier to know.
Well, you're talking about, you know, specifically, um, about animals on the harbor.
It would be easy to add one, yeah.
Because I have, I have seen animal, animal fecal matter that does not belong to any of the boats. I've seen people walking their little dogs on.
I'm, I'm sorry, what is the non-dog fecal matter matter?
What?
Dog?
Well.
Because we can't control what.
No, 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 no.
I guess I'm not fine, because I can add the language, it just, it's already there elsewhere in the ordinance, I've just covered the language here.
Right, but it's, this is specific to, you know, too specific to the animals, I mean, you're talking about what animals can and cannot do. And it's really the owners needing to be cleaning up after them on the docks as well.
I don't think it hurts to have it too much, especially this.
How I try to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So take B from sanitation and put it under the animals.
Yes.
In that use of the harbor facilities.
Be more likely to be that they would move.
So under, um, on page, top of page seven, condition of docks, the second, uh, the third sentence, um, the only affixed vendor would be cleat affixed vendor, not dock affixed vendor, I'd like that to be clarified. So instead of dock affixed vendor, you would say cleat affixed vendor, because earlier in that session, you're only allowing, um, these bumpers to be attached to a cleat.
Well, I think we need, that needs to be discussed more, whether or not what the Harbor Commission wants to recommend to the council, I walked the docks yesterday and the edging, and I get that, that the corners are, have a potential problem, but the vendoring, they're not sharp.
They're sharp.
They're, they got a edge to them, but they're not sharp edges. So, we're gonna require that the vendoring be on all boats, that's in this agreement somewhere. Anyway, so the question will be whether the council wants to allow anything that fits to that dock at all. We had talked originally about possibly allowing what it says here, but that may not be the direction to go, considering you'll be talking about affixing things to the dock and I'm not sure that the council will support to bring it, whether or not it would hang off a cleat. Remind me what was the issue with hanging off a cleat?
Well, I'd say fifty.
Yeah, I was concerned about the size of the cleats and the, the line lines and the amount of that on the cleats. Right. Right, so, um, I did see a boat down there that they had one hanging off a cleat, um, it's up to you whether or not you wanna allow these to hang off the cleats.
Well, if it interferes with the line of line used to secure a boat to the cleat, then.
Well, that would be their call, that would be the boat that was there.
I mean, most of the bumpers are tied up on your rail.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I saw, but I did see one, at least one on a cleat, so I don't know.
That would be me, but who was?
Was that you?
Yeah.
Was that him? Oh, okay.
Oh, guilty.
So, I don't know if that's something, um.
The cleat idea comes from the port of Dover, is that's.
Right. I, I think that, yeah, that's right, that's you, that's right, that's where I was trying to remember, it comes from the port, the port of Dover, that's it, it's, wow. Um, if you wanna.
What do you have hanging off?
The fender.
Cleat.
Right, right.
You want, you're okay with the cleat, but we don't, you're saying nothing would attach on the dock.
That's pretty little.
Maybe that. Yeah. Okay, so, this is being proposed is that nothing attached to the docks, only allowed hanging from the cleats. That's what she's asking, that's up to her consideration.
That's what I'm saying, I'm just making public time.
That would be up to your consideration, yeah.
Okay, alright, so, hanging from the cleats is okay, everything else is fine, is that what you're saying?
Just something get through that. Well, that's, that's. This was a suggestion.
That's, that's.
Yeah, that's a suggestion.
I don't have a problem.
That, that was what we, uh.
Do you?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what.
Is the line okay with that?
We just didn't want somebody to put a bunch of carpet and crap around that, you know?
No, no.
How about if they're designed for?
What do you mean designed for?
Did you, did you?
I showed Kim what he had and he has, uh, Ben, um, he has, what would you call those, I guess they are inflatable.
Vinyl colored styrofoam?
Yeah, about yay long, yay tall, about yay thick, and they bolt right into the side of the docks.
I'm, I'm not gonna allow that.
I don't think that's gonna pass to the council. Ken?
So, we go to a city council meeting, we can write it out.
Yeah.
Do that.
Is it because the docks aren't engineered for it, or is it because of other reasons?
I think it's, I, I don't know if it's that the docks are engineered for it or not.
What?
I don't think that it's the engineering part, we're just worried about it, all of a sudden having a bunch of stuff hanging off these docks.
So, the fuel dock, the sport dock, the number one dock have rubber rail attached to it. So now, we're not gonna attach rubber rail to three new docks.
That was our plan, mm-hmm.
To not attach it.
Correct. But I mean, if you, this is a time for people to speak up, I don't know how you tie your boat, I don't know, you know?
I put my own rubber rail on wooden docks. Same thing. It, it's just more protection for your boat, protects the dock.
That's what the rubber edges do, that's what those rubber edges are.
Yeah, you're protecting your own investment there.
Yes, we are.
On both sides.
Jack, did you have something online?
I do not, sir.
Okay, Dad?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. I don't know the boat, so I, uh.
Exactly, that material is hard, it's harder than aluminum almost, the only corners could knock on a boat. Wooden's a little more forgetty. It's, it's harder than fiberglass, how's that? So, you, you need protection there.
Have you run into problems, uh, are you aboard on three now, is that right?
Oh, I'm on four.
For the time being?
He's on four right now.
You're back to four?
Yeah, and, and I, I'm sure anybody that runs a boat, none of us have moved them around these docks to speak up. It's gonna be a learning experience, but you don't wanna run into that stuff. You know, you can bounce off a wooden dock, uh, with, uh, solid steel, you don't wanna bounce off the edge, and that plastic is hard. And it has a sharp ninety-degree corner at the fingers. I don't care how you do anything, a, a ninety-degree corner is sharp.
So you're talking about maneuvering a boat, not so much as it being tied up?
Correct, maneuvering a boat, or even when the, when the ocean gets rough, uh, the surge, that, uh, uh, I lost a couple fingers already on that stuff, that's got ninety-degree corners on it, that's sharp. Uh, I don't care what, how you cut it, it's sharp. Uh, they don't even sell tube awards with ninety-degree corners off, they champlin', it, it's, it's sharp, that's all I can say.
Okay, well, I don't think we're gonna be, I don't think we are in a position right now to make a decision on that. I would ask that maybe the Harbor Master, uh, have a look at it and then with the city, you know, maybe, great, you know, whoever, and see what the concern is and if it is something that needs to be addressed, close taste. Anybody have a problem with that?
So, I just want to make sure I understand it, so, what you're saying is where you are, or you will end up being more, that you want to put some bumpers in where you're coming in, is that?
Is this just have to do with the finger dock board?
No, I think it's on the whole, all of it.
Okay, so you're looking at the, this ninety degree, right, not this?
I'm looking at that. Well, well, and, no, this one's probably worse, one out of ten is fingers, it's, it's both of them.
Okay, I think that that's something.
I would suggest that we let the, each individual come up and speak rather than addressing, but just take in all of the comments and then you guys have your discussion, because this is really hard to follow.
It is, okay.
I'm sorry, you made a note, isn't it?
I'm gonna make a suggestion, yeah.
Okay, alright, please continue, Fred.
So, um, I wanted to point out on three B on page eight, the. The, uh, council said no to the placement of stairs, steps and stairways on the dock. He said yes to crab pots on the last three docks, but he said nothing else, so this is, this was inserted in here. Um, contrary to the wishes of the city council.
Which?
Um, three, B.
Three A? Three B?
Three. Uh, B. Fourable steps and stairways. And then on, um. On number C regarding crab pots, I see that you upped the amount of. Pots per class C vessels. Um. And that, that'll have to be a decision of the city council. For me, um, I thought we had heard from the engineers about, um. Seven, and, or they were thinking about that because we were trying to get away from having to do a lottery system. Now it's up to ten, so I'm not, I'm not sure how to think about that yet.
I, I can go over that with you, we did work it out, and they didn't actually specify, PND did not specify, a number that was up to us to figure out. There was an imaginable number proposed by the harbor commission and proposed other times, but no number has actually been set, that was left to the, um, working it out with the, the city and. Whether or not we had to come up with a lottery system. This actually does make sure that all of these can, without the. Okay?
Now, the steps, steps and stuff, many of the boats need them to get on.
I know they do, but they're not to be stored on the docks.
Do, while they're underway, yes, they can be stored on the last three sections.
That's not what the city council said.
That, okay, then this is, this is.
It's a set of proposals.
This is what is being proposed to them, and the city council will have to make that decision. The idea is that they are stored on the boat unless they're underway.
Okay, that's not what we said.
What I'm saying, that's, that's a point of the issue.
The, the thing is, um. There's even a fight for crab pots. And now the city council said crab pots, yes, and now you're expanding it and expanding it. And why can't the steps be placed in the hole of the boat while you're underway?
Cause there's people on it?
Under, uh, the holes of the boat.
They don't have it.
Yeah.
They're just.
The engine room.
It's the engine room, and that's, you don't wanna be putting stuff right, well, I would, I don't know, I would say, I would wanna be putting stuff on top of the engine.
Yeah, and there's just no practicality there in part, and when you got fishermen or whale watchers or whatever, they just probably over. Easy. One more.
Before you go further on this, can we talk after, because I do need to share with you, I actually listened to the notes, the meeting.
I did too.
Okay, so then there seems to be interpretation.
Okay, well then let's, if we can.
That will have to be decided.
Okay. What if, right?
Um, so, um, there's really a concern about. Placement of, um, crab pots on the docks and steps and everything, if people aren't careful, the surface area which, um, we just did will, will chip and crack. And I want to make.
Oh, just, go ahead.
I wanna make sure that any damage caused by the placement of crab pots or steps, if they're allowed, on those docks shall be, um, somehow put it in there. Shall the repairs, if they are damaged by these placements of the crab pots, would be charged equally between all the users of anybody who's storing the crab pots on the dock.
Yeah.
People throw these pots around and roll them and other things to get them wherever they're going, and we have new docks.
I understand that, but there are that, there are gonna be mats underneath, on top of the dock, underneath the pots, and anything else stored there. So the, the, those will not be sitting, the pots and the steps will not be sitting on the dock per se. They'll be on a mat.
I know, but getting them to those areas.
On a dock. If the docks get damaged, yes, we, we'll have to deal with that, but I don't know.
I'd like a provision to allow for the, the, um, the people responsible for putting their crab pots on the docks, if there's damage, pay for that damage. That would encourage a lot more concern about the public docks.
They do, um, I, I did run a wall through, we needed to chat with them about that, and even, uh, the, uh, the Samaritans said that, um, they have seen, and if people throw crab pots, and. I have no idea what happens down there, whether they knew that or not, um, but they will chip, in fact, didn't we not see some chips already in it?
Just.
I asked him specifically about the durability of this stuff. I thought we were getting. Concrete, if you will, but it's not, and he said it can be chip, and we can't, it's not one of those things like replacing a board. If a board, we get a chip or a crack on a board, we're gonna replace a board. But if, in order to fix it, there's no fix right now, there's no pox here is like that. He said we have to remove the entire panel.
Yeah.
So it's just, I was concerned, and I thought, well, wear and tear, what's that gonna look like? I wasn't even talking about crab pots at that time, I just wanted to know what wear and tear was gonna look like, and that's when they told me, well, I thought it was a lot more solid than that, so I was kinda surprised it wasn't.
It was in life. It's evergrind.
But no, don't get me wrong, it's not, it's not lightweight, you know what I mean? In fact, we found that it takes two people to move those things. But it is, it is more subject than I, you know, what I thought, I, I'm not an expert, I did not know what I thought that would be. I thought, you know, your structural would be there, but that's not what it is.
I take what she's saying.
Where, where I have to, yeah, that's one, okay, and, and, and you're leaving that.
Okay, I'm good with that comment.
Okay, yeah, I don't think that's the issue, right?
Okay.
Um, so we'll also figure out what exactly that looks like, and maybe, um, Travis can help us with that, uh, because I think the, uh, the, um, panels run, uh, east to west.
Play twice.
Yeah.
Well.
But.
For the most part.
And I'm not sure how there, how the. Who would be using what pad, you know what I'm saying? I'm not sure if, like, we haven't replaced one kind, how many boats would be on it, would it just be on one? So we'll have to look at that and come up with that and put something in there.
And, and, and you are gonna have wear and tear on the paddock, that's, I mean, and, um, unless she just wanted people.
Okay. Sure, yeah, that's, that's true.
They're chip unimportant, yeah.
People logging on the docks, use them, she's gonna have wear and tear.
Okay. Um. Before we get to my comments, anybody else have any comments that they wanna address? As Fran has just. Okay, um. Jack or Chad, do you have any comments? On the, uh. Regulation rap?
Well, I mean, as far as stairs go, I mean, they can't, there's no, they're too big to store any place on the boat.
Yeah, we, we've.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we got that.
I'm just, I'm just listening to all of it, I, I, again, I thought this was pretty much resolved, my apologies for thinking that, but, uh, so I'm taking it all in and writing copious notes.
Okay. Dan, you have anything?
Do you want me to have a comment, or do you wanna quickly do that?
Is yours grand or is it?
It's, it's, it's.
Burning or?
Yeah, yeah, oh, and sure, he does a sure. I'm gonna go through, is it, hopefully we get that, I will, okay. Page. Three. Um. Almost at the bottom of page is the, uh, licency, after industrial waste, licency. Any business organization or individual that has been granted legal permission by another entity to engage in any act, in an activity or rent equipment. Should this not say? Legal permission by the city of.
Where do you left them, or do you?
Okay, the, on page three.
Got it.
Down to license, licency. After industrial waste, just above litter.
It's just a general definition of.
Well, it's, it looks like boil plant, but.
Not specific to our, it's not specific.
But they, but the general regulations are specific to.
It's just a general definition. I understand, but it's saying as an overall explanation, this is called a licency.
Right, but I, I, I get that, I get that.
What do you wanna say?
What I'm trying, granted, legal permission by another entity to engage in any activity or rent equipment. Since we're talking about the depot bay docks, should it not be legal permission by the city of depot bay?
No, this is a general description, if you look at a lot of these things, like, for example, litter is a general description, not specifically calling out what our litter is or what might be, cause, you know. They, uh, see on, uh, remember others, we can model litter, don't they? So what I'm saying is that these are not, most of these are just design.
So that's just boil plant.
That's all.
Well, exactly, thank you, boil plant, exactly.
Okay. Alright, um. Let's see, okay, on page seven. Um, let's see, it's, uh, F G H. J. Loading and loading of passengers on dock five. Um. Should they, should they not be afraid to, except in an emergency, as declared by the city or the harbor master? Or should we just?
Should it?
Or should we just figure if there's an emergency?
What kind of emergency? No, okay. Yes.
I, I kinda feel like that kinda speaks for itself, there's an emergency, I feel like you do what you gotta do to make it.
Okay, and that's, that's.
I want to keep that sentence really clear.
Okay, alright, good. Okay, page eleven. Under G, toilet standard. The last sentence reads, persons shall use the CVA pump dump station for dumping of vessel holding tanks located on the fuel dock. Persons, I think it should read, persons so, shall use the CVA pump dump station located on the fuel dock for dumping of vessel holding tanks.
Semantics.
Because the vessel holding tanks are not located.
Semantics, but we can do it.
Huh?
Semantics, but we can do it.
It is semantics, yes, but it's.
It means either here or there, it doesn't really matter.
Oh, that's, it matters to me.
I'll make the change.
Next one is on page, uh, I think I got two here. Page thirteen. At the top of the page is a completion of a sentence that belong, that starts on, uh. H I, the bottom twelve. Fuels should be, shall be stored only in approved containers and portable tanks. Underwriter laboratory approved safety cans or department of transportation approved containers. For the handling and use of flammable liquids. You don't need shall be in there, given the sentence. Because that's what you're talking about.
Just title, thank you.
Um. On the bottom of page, uh, thirteen, seven. Uh, we're talking about self fueling. Um. Comply with all environmental, the second sentence, comply with all environmental practices and receive, second line.
Training.
Uh, training, yeah, control training, okay, okay. There, uh, page fourteen. Uh, ninety-two oh seven, C. Second line, outlets to another, to another moored slips, just take the S off of slips.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Uh, item E. Vehicle or vessel contact prohibited, no person shall cause any vehicle or watercraft to be placed below the dock, why vehicle?
Uh.
I know, let's get on it.
This is sitting on here, so if you wanna remove it, this is the.
I, I just don't know, how you gonna get a vehicle on a dock?
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, the dock, dock two is wider now. Could get a nipple on it, is that bold?
I'm second to that.
Oh, yeah. Is that a vehicle?
Okay. Why vehicle, that's it, alright, okay, fine.
Is that a vehicle?
Alright. I'm satisfied.
Just like that, is that a vehicle?
Page twenty-one.
Just to clarify, if it's in black, it's been in here. You're welcome to make any suggestion you want, but if they ask me why, I can't answer that question for you, it's.
Oh, I'm, I'm, okay, I'm asking why.
It's what you just doing.
We, we, use the word indemnification, indemnify the city, indemnify the city. Why is it not in this particular, why was it, why is it?
Why is that, Carla? Would you like to explain why identification is, uh, in this, not in this particular area?
Which, no.
Well, the reason I'm saying that is because I did wanna put indemnification, but I've been reminded that it's in, um, another location.
It is on another location.
Right, so, but, uh, I don't remember where you said that.
I remember that indemnification is always.
So it's already in here, it's also in the, uh, mortgage license agreement, yeah. That's why it's not in here as well.
Okay.
Jack, I tried, but she, you know.
I know, she's gotta tell them.
Desiree in there.
Get a reminder.
Just like that, I'm in there.
Alright, uh, ninety-two, our next thing, that page twenty-one, ninety-two eleven. Um. Non-waiver jurisdiction. I've read that those two sentences a number of times, nah, I don't understand. I don't understand what you're trying to say to you. The failure of the city to enforce all or any part of a mortgage license agreement shall not constitute a waiver of any rights. Including that which may have failed. Including that which may have failed to enforce under a mortgage license agreement, the agreement shall be construed under the laws of state law.
Correct.
Right. Including that which.
What that means is if we don't enforce something, if we fail to enforce something, if we fail to enforce a fueling regulation that's in here, doesn't mean it's not legal. It means we can still enforce it even if we haven't done it before. So what I hear sometimes is, well, you never cared about it before, that doesn't matter, it's been in the rules.
Okay, right.
We're forcing it around, that doesn't preclude that.
That should have not, that should have not say, including that which the city may have failed to enforce.
It's assumed because this is the city ordinance.
It's assumed, okay, alright.
That's why it says the failure of the city.
It doesn't say.
Where you're the ones that enforce that, that's the first part.
The failure, including that which they may have failed to enforce, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm done.
Pinky, guilty pinky.
Yes, yes.
I just saw something that stopped, stopped moving right now.
Okay.
On page twenty, um, one, the, uh, D, the guide service outfitters. Um, saying that if they're not mortgage holders, are required to be business licensed through the city, knowing that it's new business within the city, non-city property such as docks or boat launch. Do you wanna put a timeframe on that? The, like, within, there is no time, there is no time, and they actually have a reservation.
Okay, okay.
We changed that to.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
No more five days, four times, no more of that.
I just wanted, I want to.
Before, before you do business.
Before you do business.
Yeah, okay, I just, I'll make sure.
Yeah.
Clear on that one.
Alright, anybody else have any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none.
I, I have a comment. I've been, in the knee. Yeah, I, I, I have a comment. This crab pot thing has been lurking around here with us for what, a couple years now? And if you stop to look at the big picture and look down at what we're talking about, we're talking about maybe, like, five to six hours out of the day. Really, that's, that's what you're talking about, that these crab pots will be on the dock and that the stairwell to get up and on. and that the stairwell to get up and off the dock, because they, you know, the rule is when you're done, everything goes back on your boat. So I mean, if you think about it, it's just such a short time that we're really spending a lot of time talking about. I, I want to let these charters do their business, make their money, and that's how they do it. And of course, I mean, ten pots, I think is agreeable, workable. But like I said, when you really think about it, they're not there all night. It's really could, I mean, easily be from eleven o'clock until three o'clock, four o'clock, I mean. I just want to say, that's my overall big picture on it. And I, I want to be able to let us all enjoy these new docks and I want the charters to be able to make, make their money and I want the recreational people to enjoy the docks. I think that, I, it's my hope that the city council will, to look at it. If we're not asking for overnight storage, we're not, you know, I think everyone has really come together and um worked together to come up with what we have for right now. I really, um, will hope to see that city council can see, see that. And, and I think what we presented is a good idea.
I would add to that, that I have I have no empirical data, just anecdotal data, but I have never, in the times I've been on the docks during the day going through the harbor, never have I seen all the crab pots that are on the docks, off the docks during the crabbing and fishing. I think with the new docks and the rules that we have, that we are proposing now, I don't think we're going to see anywhere near the number of crab pots on the docks or on the boats that we have in the past. And this, this was discussed with the charter fishermen as well. So I would just say, I, I don't think we're going to see, I think at one time the local council, three hundred and something crab pots on the dock. I, I don't believe, and again, it's just anecdotal data, I don't believe we're going to see that, anywhere near that.
Hey, Jack, can I chime in?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, the, the main thing is, is, you know, no more than seven or eight charter boats are whale watching at any one time. You know, so I mean, that's ten pots per charter boat, you know, so we're talking between the two, dock one and two. There's going to be seventy or eighty pots on the docks, you know, just while we're whale watching or if we have a fishing trip without, without crabbing. You know, and for the most part, everybody's plan is just to leave the pots out, out overnight, you know, just roll them over out at, out at sea. So it's going to be, there's hardly going to be hardly any pots on the docks at all. And when they are on the docks, you know, there's, it, it's calm enough for us to be whale watching and stuff, so there's going to be no surge in the bay or anything else, so, I mean, it's going to be calm waters also. So I mean, I, I would be shocked if there was any more than sixty or seventy pots on the docks and, and on, on the docks at any one time.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Any other comments? Special meaning of the depot bay harbor commission is.
Hey, hey, Jack, Jack?
Bill?
Jack?
Yes.
Hey, you know, I, um, this is a, a side note, I'm wondering if anybody could trade me, because I'm, I'm supposed to be the liaison for March, I think.
Yeah.
Or city council, and I realized I've got a couple of shows in March that I, that I need to be doing. I was wondering if anybody might be willing to trade me for March, for April or May or even June or whatever.
I'll do it.
All right.
Liz?
Liz will do it.
Okay, what, what is your, what is your month, what is your month, Liz?
I don't remember. I think it's May.
Eight months to ours.
I think May, because you, we have a meeting this, of this, yes.
Yeah, this.
So why can't it be March?
Okay.
August, March.
All right.
Okay, just, just let me know.
Whatever month and we'll let you know what month it is, uh.
Okay.
We've gotten to cover at our meeting in March.
Okay, very good.
I, I, I don't think we need.
Oh, okay.
I don't believe that we need to, okay, the, the meeting has not been adjourned. I don't believe that we need to have a harbor commission meeting uh next week on the twenty-sixth. Because I think we've covered pretty much everything that we need to do in the near future. Karen?
Just so you know, that part of the presentation to the council on the March will be looking at the storage fee they've asked us to look at.
Yeah.
So, um, including the storage fee.
Storage fee for the.
Storage fee, remember that was discussed.
We, we didn't talk about that.
Yes, so, um.
We just didn't know what it is. We don't know what it is and we won't.
Uh, it depends. Um, one of the things, the council has to set the fee, whether or not the harbor commission wants to make a recommendation. Uh, part I had pulled an old, prior to when, I don't remember how that was. It showed what a past storage fee used to be on these docks.
Not on the docks.
Not on the docks, that's right, not the, the.
Never charged for the docks.
Right, so, um, I do not have a starting number for them. That's going to be my starting number and I think one of them fifty cents and one of them is based on square foot. So, but I have to look at the date.
Okay.
So I don't know if you want to, uh, if that's anything you want to have input before their council meeting. I mean, when is this going to be discussed, council?
March fourth.
March fourth.
Are there going to impose fees for parking in parking lots?
That hasn't been asked me.
Don't, don't go there, well.
Hasn't been asked me. So, but no, that, that's the only other missing place, plus we will probably have, um, my plan is to have the actual draft fueling, self fueling permit that we've talked about doing.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not planning on attaching any fee to it, that doesn't mean something won't be. I wasn't planning on attaching any fee to it because it's more about education and just making sure that they've got the bases covered. Um, and then the other thing.
Won't the fee come out if though they adopt the ordinance?
At the March fourth? I'm bringing it all up at one time. I want this, because we have to get this moving because if we don't get it done, right now, everything is no crab pots on the dock. So we need to get everything settled before we bring things back on.
Right, we understand.
So I do plan to bring, it can be a resolution and make a do emergency adoption to make sure, otherwise the boats can't bring their crab pots uneven on the docks. Everybody understands that, right? We have to get this approved because the last order from the council was no crab pots on the docks after October fourteenth.
Right, but we also haven't determined the cost of the, of the mapping, the mats.
Right, so that's another thing. I don't, the cost is the cost.
I know what it is, yeah.
How it gets split up and how we look at it that way is something else we'll cover on the fourth. So whether or not you want to have a discussion and a recommendation to provide to the council before the fourth, it's up to you.
Okay, do we have, my understanding in discussions I've had with staff is that the city is going to provide the mats. That was the last one.
That was the last sentence, then. Well, and that was what the storage fee was designed to cover.
I understand that.
It's a deal, yeah. Going to be up to the council how they do it, but.
I understand that, right, yeah, but the thing, you know, we've already, I think.
We already have the quote before, we know what it's going to cost us. And part of what we'll probably do will be determining whether or not whatever fee they want to charge will cover the cost of us to put those protections on it.
Right, over period of that. The, the cost, cost, well, that's up to city council.
It's up to city, yeah.
I, I should have been reading the.
Well, if you have a recommendation, the twenty-sixth is the time when they, that we need to talk about it. Otherwise, you can talk about it on March fourth, when, when, here at the council, is that what everyone presents.
I, I think on March fourth, uh, we can talk about that.
Yeah.
Everybody okay with that, uh, on, on the harbor commission?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I just have one thing, if we're canceling the February next week. Um, so Tab had brought up that he would prefer that we switch to the later timeframe, starting in March rather than in April. And I just want to see if that's going to be the plan.
You're still.
Through March.
Okay, um, Chad, you still want to start the evening meetings in March?
Yeah, yeah, because that's spring, that, that last week of March is, we're in spring break.
Okay, all right.
I mean, thank you for remembering.
Yeah. Anybody have a problem on the commission? Okay, so we're start the, uh, the evening meetings, which begin at six o'clock. Uh, beginning in March two, twenty twenty-five. Okay.
And also to let everyone know, we will have a ribbon cutting for the new docks on March first at eleven o'clock down by dock two.
Yeah, ribbon cutting on the new docks for your guy, people online, March first, eleven o'clock. There will be, there will be food, and balloons, yeah.
They won't let me do champagne.
Oh, pop a balloon.
I'm not.
All right.
All right.
Having said that, the harbor commission special meeting of February nineteenth is not adjourned.
No meeting next.
Ninety-one, everybody.
I know you're going to miss it.
We will.